You have a roll call, please.
Mayor T. Walt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seelock.
Here.
Councilman Cockrell.
Here.
Councilman Gillespie.
Here, thank you.
Councilman Holloway.
Here.
Councilman Meza.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
Next item tonight is approval of minutes, regular council meetings, work session council meeting minutes of August 24, 2020. Do your motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the regular council and work session council meeting minutes of August 24, 2020 as presented.
Here a second.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next item tonight is received petitions or correspondence from the public. Ms. President, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, sir, we have two. The first one is Timothy Rattigan.
Tim Rattigan. 6079 Stonewall Jackson Highway. You'll have to forgive me for my voice, I've been doing a lot of talking. We dodged a bullet and then two deputies in California are shot in their vehicle. We dodged a bullet and this is what happens. But that's not what I'm here to talk about tonight, actually. Tonight, I would like to talk, I would like to take this time to thank our interim town manager, Mr. Teedrick, the Front Royal Police Department, the Warren County Sheriff's Office, and any other town official who was involved in helping us make our local law enforcement appreciation parade a huge success. Now, what I would like to, I'd like to expound on that just a little bit. I find it absolutely refreshing and wonderful that the town of Front Royal has the ability to look at several different events and find a way to accommodate those events so that each one of those events are a success. A few months ago, an event was held where the group needed a route close to their venue and their venue was Bing Crosby Stadium. That was what they needed and that's what they got. Our event was vastly different. We needed a short and direct route through the town of Front Royal where the, where we would get the most visibility. Both events were vastly different and they worked out wonderfully. So that should be a credit to the town of Front Royal, the interim town manager, and all parties involved, that they were able to recognize the uniqueness of each event and was able to accommodate both with little to no problem. It was a wonderful event. I'd also like to take this time to thank any of the town council members who took time out of their days and their very busy lives with campaigning and everything and attended the parade. It was a very positive parade, a very positive one. The only downside was that someone managed to sneak a Confederate flag into it. That's, that's not what we're about. We are about showing support and defending, praying, and doing everything we can to show our law enforcement officers that if citizens stand behind them, especially during a time when their immunity was almost stripped away from them. Thank God it was not. That was the, that was the bullet that I was talking about. And the simple fact that they give their, their lives day after day without knowing when or if they'll come home. We see that in North Carolina when a 35-year-old deputy was responding to a robbery or something like that. The individual responsible was appearing to cooperate and then the next thing he knows, he pulls the gun and he shoots him. This 35-year-old Marine Corps vet and deputy had two children, two beautiful children, and a fiance, where he was once looking forward to getting married to his fiancee and creating a wonderful family on October 20th. Their family is now dreading the fact that they have to lay him to rest. So, we are blessed to have a law enforcement like ours and I hope to God the town council is wise enough to do everything to keep it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Next speaker, please.
Bruce Rappaport.
Bruce Rappaport, Thrainer West Main Street, Front Royal, Virginia. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. And I want to start it off with a short story. Many of you remember my mother's business on Main Street, Boston store, there for 71 years. And I'm going to tell you a short story around Easter time back in 60s and 70s, maybe even the 80s. Women from farm, farm women, they would come in around Easter. And it was, it was before like the crops kind of like were ready to go out for sale and money was tight. So anyway, these ladies would come in and, I don't mean to bore, bore you folks with this, but they would come in, I'm getting to a point, they would come in and, gosh, they would say, "Gosh, that's a nice-looking dress over there, I'm sure we'd like to have that for Easter." And so my mother, they would call her Miss Eleanor. And she'd come over, all five foot tall of her, come on over and fit her, fit her up in the dress and get her in that three-way mirror that was in the back. Little kids loved and marked it up with their mouths and hands and, and they saw, "Oh, that looks so nice." But I don't have the money. We just don't have the money right now. And well, she says, "Well, you know, let's get you a pair of shoes." And they'd go over and get her a pair of shoes and they'd look real nice and then, "Let's fit you with a little pocketbook." And then, "Oh, by the way, it's Easter, let's get you a little Easter hat." So, all of that came down, well, she'd say, "Miss Eleanor, it looks so great, but I really don't have the money to pay you." And my mother would say, "Dottie," or whatever your name was, "you know, you really don't need to worry about that. You come in and you pay when you can." And I want to tell you that lady would come in every week and she would put like $10 down or $5 down and, and she was so happy and they'd hug and, and then they go on. Well, what I just described to you is the definition of a moral obligation. And this is no different than what we are up against with the police department. We have a moral obligation to pay, we have taken residency there. The hypocrisy of it all is that when I walk into the police station, there is a dedication sign there, but we've not paid a nickel for it, except for your $10,000. So, the point is, a quick definition is more obligation duty which one owes and which he ought to perform but which he is not legally bound to fulfill. Yes, you're not legally bound to fulfill because it was financed at a rate that you didn't like, but we didn't have to take residency for it. So, and I could go on and talk about the Leeches Run Parkway, the $15 million project that the state paid $8 million and we owe 34 percent and the county owes 66 percent. Well, somebody's paying that down every month or every quarter. Just want you all to think about that, you know, going forward, that we're coming up close to where we're going to have to start paying principal. You have a payment coming up in October 1 and in November, you're going to end up having to pay the principal. So, let's get the interest rate, the low interest rates now, you have the bonds, sell them, finance it, and let's make the payments. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item tonight is item six, reports, interim town manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the only thing I wanted to go over this evening is we have a benefactor by name of Frank who is going to be donating some banners and signage for Main Street. He's working closely with the artistic Warren County artist to design the banners and we're really hopeful that it's going to add some value to Main Street and so we just wanted to let you know that that's going to be coming here in the next couple of weeks, we hope. So, you'll see some more vibrant signs and banners and parking signs on Main Street. So, I just want to let council know that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, man. Next item tonight is requests and queries from council members.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Frank for his generous donation and also the police appreciation parade was a huge success and my son and I attended that, was that last week or the other week? So, I think that's it for me, just wanted to thank everybody.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. One, I as well attended the Back the Blue Parade and it was, it was a great success. I think, is Tim still here? Yes. And Jeannie, lots of crowds, lots of people, lots of sport, I hope they felt it. Also, wanted to thank our benefactor Frank for the sign. Somebody was talking about how the banner, banners would be nice there, so I'm glad somebody's doing that. Another thing, Mr. Rappaport, I just wanted to clarify, we, we didn't pay $10,000 yet. I just, we offered it, it was, it was not, nobody, nobody took us up on it. I just wanted to make sure when you said that.
I understand, I understand.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to let you know. The next thing is, and I, I'm asking about electric. So, I keep having citizens asking me about why we keep having like electric, our electric cut off and, and stopped and like flickers and things like that. And it's happened enough now that I was thinking I might address this here at the public and maybe ask for somebody to explain that a little bit. I had been hearing, citizens had been approaching me yesterday, happened to be in the grocery store when the electricity went off and people were all talking about, because there was no storm, there was no, you know, there wasn't any storm, so it didn't really make sense. And then I know when we got to school this morning, you know, it, all the clocks were off, all, everything was set. So, I thought this might be a good opportunity to ask in open session about what could be happening. So, Mr. Teedrick, if you, sorry.
That's all right, thanks, Ms. Cockrell. I'm going to turn it over to David Jenkins, our Director of Energy Services. Every Monday, we have a staff meeting and he provides a report of what transpired over the week and, and then at the same time, occasionally he goes over some annual figures. So, he's here tonight, he's on, he's here for another meeting matter, but I thought he might be able to address, are you prepared to address some of those questions?
No, absolutely.
Sorry, thank you.
Yep.
I just thought it may be good for everybody. I could ask you personally, but I couldn't tell everybody, so this lets everybody.
No, this may stop some of the phone calls that we receive, it's a very important question and I can assure everyone that we're always addressing it. And to, to start off with what we're seeing here just recently is probably due to us more being at home here than we've ever been before, because actually this year, we're actually having a lot less power outages this year trending from what it's been in the previous years. In here, in a few minutes, I'll give you some results on that. But if it's okay, I'd just like to start with what the town has and, and the whole thing of what we go through, I'll make it, turn it into a long answer, so to speak.
Please.
Anyhow, you know, as y'all know, the town, you know, owns and operates its own distribution system. We buy all our wholesale power from American Municipal Power, which travels through transmission lines that is owned by First Energy and Rappahannock Electric. And then it dumps into five substations that we own, one being on Manassas Avenue, Kendrick Lane, and then another one on Remount Road. And then we have one out on Happy Creek area, out on Route 606, and then one out on Stralsburg Road that does the Riverton area. Anyhow, out of that comes 16 different circuits. So, essentially what happens is, when you see a power outage, or a momentary outage is what we call it, is that momentary outage that you're seeing is actually protecting the town's equipment. So, there's really two options. One is, is let's just say that an animal contact's on the line, okay? That thing travels all the way back to the substation. The main breaker sees it and what it does is it momentarily opens up. But then it says, "Well, let's see if the fault is still on the line," and it goes back out again. If the fault has cleared, then the only outage that you see is localized into maybe, say, sometimes six customers, 15 customers, whatever the case is. So, the other option that would be is everybody on that circuit going out. So, all across the country, nobody follows that, that, because it's just, for one thing is, you would never know where the problem lies when you went back to look into it. So, that's, that's the long answer of that. But we understand that the, that the blinks, so to speak, are very inconvenient, makes your clocks have to reset, people's on their computers today. But just to give you some statistics of, of what we're finding, and see, we're always tracking this, every year we have what's called an E-reliability system that we're a part of and, so what it does is gives statistics and it amounts, it compares us to all the other power companies that have signed up with this as well. And if y'all recall, last year, we actually got an award for our response time to that as well as per number of customers and how many power outages there was compared to that same type of numbers. So, we actually won an award off of that. But, but so far this year, there's been a total since January 1 of 59 power outages within the town. Seventeen of them was caused by animal contact, which could be, most of the time it's a squirrel, but it can be a bird, squirrel, raccoon, many different things on that. Next, there was 15 by equipment failure, which means that, you know, maybe a transformer was bad or a bad cutout lightning arresters, maybe there was lightning in the area. It was protect, the lightning arresters actually protect our equipment. And then the, there was 11 caused by trees. And this number here from numbers in the past is really something. Nine vehicle accidents so far this year caused by power outages. In the last two years, when we look back, it was only one vehicle accident caused in that, so. And then three of them was from our transmission provider. And that's, in other words, the, the lines that feed our substations went down and for that, we, you know, we have to, what we have to do is we reach out to Rappahannock Electric, who's our last point of delivery, find out if they know what the problem is, how long it's going to take them to clear up. If it's not going to be any reasonable amount of time, then we switch the folks over to another circuit, out of another substation, so. And then four of those was just straight up unknown. We, we get out there and just couldn't find a problem anywhere, so. But in 2000 and, in 2018, there was 153 power outages total within the town. 2019 was 138 and like I said today, we're at 59. So, we are constantly doing maintenance to prevent power outages. You know, we have a lot of, we put up a lot of squirrel guards and little squirrels are just so feisty, they find ways through those things, but.
They pay the price.
Yeah, they do, they do that. And, you know, then as well, we have a pole inspection program that comes around every five years. That's a company that we hire to evaluate all our utility poles. You know, they actually do some born into them to see if it's rotten from the inside. And so then they give us a list, we go out and change them. And then as well, you know, the telephone company, they own a lot of our poles here in town as well and they do the same type things. Once a year, we have a, a guy that comes in with a thermal vision camera and he checks for all the different hot spots and he points them out to us and we go and make him repairs off of that, so. And then it's just a constantly trimming trees, which is a battle within itself, so.
Thank you. And this is just an observation, but I do wonder if because more people have been home this year, working from home, that maybe, maybe these things happened, but they were at work and they didn't notice it. But as you said, you know, they're home, they're working from home, they're on the computers and, and they, they're noticing it more. Whereas if you're, if you're not home and you come home at night unless you see your clock off, you don't really realize whether or not.
Right.
You lost power, so.
And then, then today too, you know, a lot of our technology is getting so sensitive, you know, I mean, just the littlest things. So, it used to be that sometimes some alarm clocks wouldn't even notice it, but today they're just so sensitive that everything catches it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, I appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you all.
Thanks, David. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that I participated in the Back the Blue Parade and it was, it was far more vehicles there than I had actually thought there would be. It was, it was a lot. And I also want to thank Frank for the donation, that's great, that's awesome. And also, I'd like to touch on Mr. Rappaport's concern about the town's obligations to the EDA. Last week, I've had a few people come to me and ask me the same thing. So, what I did, I got with our outside attorneys and then got together and we put together a press release that I'd like to read tonight if I could, and Mr. Mayor. It is well-known that the actions of the ex-executive director of the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Warren and the Town of Front Royal, otherwise referred to as the EDA, have caused significant economic, financial harm to the Town of Front Royal, the County of Warren, the EDA, and the taxpayers and have resulted in the filings of two lawsuits in the Circuit Court of Warren County. So, I want to just take a few minutes here to discuss the town's position to these matters and clear up any misconceptions that may exist due to, in part, the EDA either directly or indirectly making statements that are entirely inaccurate. During the relevant time period, the Warren County Board of Supervisors oversaw the EDA. It appointed all board members and provided funding for the EDA operations, but it did not actually operate the EDA. By law, the EDA is a separate political entity empowered and in fact required by state, required by statute to act on its own for the benefit of the residents of the county, the town, and the Commonwealth. Again, by statute, the EDA is operated by a board of directors. The directors make decisions and take action and are accountable for all actions taken by the EDA. The EDA board hired an executive director, Jennifer McDonald. Jennifer McDonald, I'm sorry, Jennifer McDonald, to act as the primary manager on its behalf. But merely hiring a director and empowering that person does not, of course, shield the board of directors from liability for the EDA's actions. The EDA gave its ex-executive director, McDonald, unfettered authority to access and use funds earmarked for town and county development projects, then absolutely failed to oversee her use these funds. As a result, millions of dollars of the town and county funds were stolen, converted, or misused. The EDA is responsible to the town for the wrongful acts of its ex-executive director, McDonald. Instead of accepting some responsibility and being accountable to the citizens and working hand in hand with the town in good faith to rectify the, this mess created by its employee, the EDA board has instead taken a regrettable and unseemly path of pointing fingers everywhere but at itself and attempting to avoid the consequences of its massive failure of oversight. It is this failure of the EDA to take action and responsibility for that harm caused by its ex-executive director, McDonald, to the town and taxpayers that forced the town to file its lawsuit against the EDA. The town has made repeated attempts to work with the EDA to troubleshoot and resolve the issues the EDA negligence created, but merely has been largely, been either ignored or somehow blamed by the EDA for the EDA's own failings and misdeeds. Perhaps the best and most pressing example of the EDA's failure to acknowledge responsibility concerns the construction of the Town of Front Royal Police Department Headquarters. The town does not dispute that it agreed to fund the construction of a new headquarters for the town police department, nor does the town dispute that it knew the construction would require the EDA to obtain financing. The dispute centers on the promises made by the EDA to the town council that it would obtain financing for the police department according to specific and favorable financing terms. Town council accepted the promise and authorized the EDA to move forward with the project only in accordance with the EDA's promised terms. Before construction began, the ex-executive director of the EDA told the town that the EDA had in fact obtained authorized financing. As stated by the ex-executive director, then asked for an update, the money is in our accounts. This turned out to be a lie. The loan actually obtained by the EDA to build the police department is very different from the loan that the EDA promised that the town council approved. The loan obtained by the EDA would result in the town paying millions of dollars more in interest. Accordingly, since the loan has, was obtained without authorization or consent of the town council, the town has of course refused to make payments on the fraudulent loan and has explored other means of resolving the issue. The town operates in the service of the citizens and at their will. The town business is conducted in open, public form where taxpayers are allowed to participate and be heard and the actions of the town are authorized by a proper vote of elected officials. When town council empowered the EDA to build the police department, it did so in accordance with the process and such made certain promises and representations to the public about the police department project would be accomplished. The EDA knew that the loan it was obtaining to build the police department was materially different from what town council had approved. Rather than go through the process of another public hearing, as required by law, the EDA chose to proceed outside of the process and obtained the loan without town council approval. The EDA continues to make statements to reporters that end up in local newspapers that include the notion that the town is somehow obligated to repay a fraudulent unauthorized loan. We anticipate that the EDA's protestations will become more urgent as October approaches since that is when the principal and interest payments under the loan start to become due and payable. However, since the loan was obtained by the EDA in its own name without town council approval or public participation, it is the EDA's sole responsibility to repay. I want to make it clear, the town will not pay any financial obligation incurred by the EDA for the benefit of the town that was obtained without the approval of town council as required by law. The town has no obligation, legal, moral, or otherwise, to repay these unlawful debts, but instead has a duty to the taxpayers of the town to reject them. Suggesting otherwise undermines the very purpose behind operating a political subdivision in the. in the open and allowing citizens the right to be heard. In a similar vein, the town has been paying and will continue to pay any and all debts incurred by the EDA on the town's behalf that were authorized by the town council. As such, as a, as repeatedly and constantly told to the county and the EDA, the town is willing to make payments to the EDA for the police department headquarters that are equal to the payments that town council authorized, which include the entire principal debt and authorized interest rate. In the interest of good and will, in the spirit of the compromise the town even offered pursuant to a letter of intent signed by town council, which would have ended the lawsuit between the town and the EDA, to pay a portion of the excess interest payments through its funding of the EDA. But this offer was summarily rejected by the county board supervisors without explanation or further comment. The Town of Front Royal has and is willing, has and is working hard to resolve the many financial and economic issues caused by the actions of its ex-executive director of the EDA and her cohorts and will continue to do so with or without the participation of the county or EDA if necessary. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Next slide, I have before the mayor, I have none, but other than thanking the people for coming out tonight to our meeting. Next item tonight is proposals or petition deletions of items to the agenda. Okay, next item tonight is the consent agenda items. We have four tonight, FY 2021 and '22 budget calendar. Second one, extension of contract with business recovery consulting services, bid for various sizes of transformer. And the fourth one is bid for transformer replacement at Kendrick Lane Substation. Do you hear a motion? Do you hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Does anybody want to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Okay, could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sealot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Our next item tonight is a public hearing. The public hearing is, council has requested to affirm a, the first reading of an ordinance to amend for all town code, chapter 138, peddlers, celesters, and enter, in, in, in written mer, purchase to allow the use of vending machines operated on the town streets to peddle ice cream and other frozen desserts. This time I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Is anyone out in the public would like to come and speak on this item? Anyone would like to speak? Third time, anyone would like to speak? Turn it over to the council, do you hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council affirm on its first reading of ordinance to amend Front Royal Town Code, chapter 138, peddlers, solicitors, and in written merchants to allow the use of vending machines operated on town streets to peddle ice cream and other frozen desserts as presented.
Do you hear a second?
I second it.
Mr. Mayor, before, I'm sorry, before you go to a vote, I'd like to bring your attention, I believe it was a typo under vending machines, it should be vending vehicles. Is that right, Mr. Mayor?
I was wondering about that.
Okay.
Sorry for that, clarifying.
Ice cream machine on the street.
So unless it changes, Ms. Thompson's.
I'm sure we can correct that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? No discussion, could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sealot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item nine is council approval, FY 21 budget amendment for HIDA, administrative assistant position for the police department. Could you read the summary, please?
The Washington Baltimore High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area LLC is providing the Front Royal Police Department a grant in the amount of $52,035 to pay for an administrative assistant salary and fringe benefits. If the funding is cut or HIDTA discontinues the designation, the position will be eliminated. Council's requested to approve an FY 21 budget amendment in the amount of $39,025 for the addition of the administrative assistant, which is 75% of the grant, the remaining $13,010 would be included in the FY 22 budget.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a FY 21 budget amendment in the amount of $39,025 for the addition of a high intensity drug trafficking area administrative assistant that includes salary and fringe benefits for the Front Royal Police Department, which is 75% of the $52,035 of the Washington Baltimore High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area LLC grant. I further move that the remaining $13,010 be included in the FY 22 budget. I further move that if the funding is cut or HIDTA discontinues the designation, the position will be eliminated.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Do you hear a non-roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sealot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 10, council approval, FY 21 budget transfer of attrition position for the police department. Could you read the summary, please?
Council's requested to approve an FY 21 budget transfer in the amount of $55,915 from general fund contingency for an attrition position for the police department. It is further noted that the position will be reviewed annually and budgeted based on recognized needs.
Do you hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a FY 21 budget transfer in the amount of $55,915 from general fund contingency for an attrition position for the police department. I further move that the position will be reviewed annually and budgeted based on recognized needs for the fiscal year.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? No discussion, do I have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Sealot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. That concludes our record agenda. The next item tonight is a closed meeting, do you hear a motion?
I'm done, I will read it, but, thank you. It's a long one, if you don't mind, I'm gonna. I move that town council go into closed meeting for the following reasons. One, regarding McKay Springs property, a town public alley and a potential business proposing to locate in the Town of Front Royal and the town manager's position under the following provisions of the Freedom of Information Act. A, the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a.3. B, the discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a.29 of the Code of Virginia. C, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a.8 of the Code of Virginia. D, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the town pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a.1 of the Code of Virginia. And two, regarding the proposed CARES Act funding agreement between the county and the town and the letter from the board of supervisors, legal counsel, and the demands placed upon the town. A, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of town council pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a.29 of the Code of Virginia. And B, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a.8 of the Code of Virginia.
Second. Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Could I have a roll call, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. This time we'll go into closed meeting, I don't believe we'll be making any other decisions here this evening. Thank everybody for coming.